Okay, good evening, everybody. We just came out of executive session as we discussed the employment history of particular individuals. So, we're gonna move right into our regular meeting. With that said, just a reminder, our next meeting is February 5th. With the change, I know on here it says that it was supposed to be at the Garrison Union Free School, we're going to have a combined meeting here instead. In this room or in the high school?
So, it's my understanding, we can talk more about it, that we last met at the high school in one of the larger settings, just because we sat together as boards of educations and superintendents. So, this isn't, I don't think we have too much more floor space here. So, if that works, that's where we'll have the meeting.
Sure.
So, high school?
Yes.
Two eleven or something.
Two eleven.
I know, right there it says Garrison's High School, two eleven, but I think we all know that means here.
It does.
Okay. Alrighty. Dr. Banate?
Yeah, so again, apologize that we're running a little late, but thank you. I wanted to provide a brief update on the district goals and some near-term actions that we've taken on the goals that we discussed at the beginning of the year. I'm pleased with the progress that we've made. And we're gonna just pull up some slides here, and I'm gonna hop over to Ms. Dino's seat, and we'll look through this. Thank you. Alright. So, just an overview, I'm gonna present each district goal. There are three. What we defined as our current reality, and I say "we" meaning the administrative team and I, really worked with these goals for a period of time through the fall, to define where are we at in relation to that goal, and what our ideal future state is. And it's that gap between where our current reality is and our ideal future state that we're trying to resolve. Some items are, can be addressed in the short term, and I think you'll see that through our discussion tonight, and some are gonna take a little, are gonna take some time. Ideally, we're making strong progress towards each goal by the end of the school year, as per our discussion earlier this year. But I think when it comes to items such as facilities, we realize that there's some near-term movement that we could make, but that there's likely more of a long-term discussion that has to be had as well as part of that process. And we'll dig into each of these a little bit as we go along. And then I just have some additional information with respect to areas of success and future areas of growth to share at the end, that don't necessarily fall under either of the goals themselves. So, our first goal pertained to curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And this goal really spoke to establishing a structure for a continuous review of K-12 program areas. We wanted to identify relative strengths and weaknesses within the instructional program, review programs that are being considered for implementation within the school system, monitor internal and external resources, and adapt to the changing needs of the curricular and instructional program, and clearly define measures of success. So, as our administrators and I are working with this, we're defining our current reality as, just pointing to a system not really being in place for examining programmatic questions through a K-12 lens. We have individual building-based teams that examine program areas, but we don't have a group that we bring together to really see, what is the thread that connects these areas between our elementary, middle, and high school? Which creates some disjointedness, or lack of cohesion, in our instructional program by levels. However, our team would also point to that sometimes that's even within a level. So, even though we may have a team at the elementary, middle, and high school, sometimes we see disconnect or misalignment even within a school as well. Ideally, we wanna be, have a process and structures in place that examine each program area that's flexible and responsive to community initiatives, to NICID requirements, to trends in the field, that create that sense of alignment K-12, where each grade level truly is building upon the preceding grading level, grade level, excuse me. So, there's the gap that we have to resolve, being in no system, or these very small, isolated systems, to a system that examines each program area and truly creates cohesion between and among our grade levels and departments. So, these are just some short-term actions between now and the end of the year that we'll be taking to try to establish this. Probably the most important one internally is to create the District Instructional Council, where we have representatives from each grade level or program area that meet on a routine basis for the remainder of the 1920 school year. Those meetings will begin next month. We also wanna look to the curriculum, instruction, and assessment systems and structures that are utilized in similar districts. Not very large school districts, because there tend to be much, many more layers to the administration in larger school systems, but we have some very, some high-performing small school districts in our region, and I think we can learn a lot from them and how they've tried to approach this, this work. We're not the only ones who are faced with this, so I think there's some good learning that can go on there. And then to reevaluate our current structure with modifications based on learning from other districts that I'll have to share with you by the end of the year. So, those are some just concrete, short-term actions that we're taking right now to put us in a better position with respect to this goal. So, one thing I'm sitting with is that our mission states that we are preparing our students to succeed in an ever-changing global society. You see that posted in our buildings, it's on our letterhead, but we don't really have a mechanism for measuring whether our system produces this result. So, that's a question our instructional council should be really sitting with. If that's our core purpose, for students to be prepared, to succeed in an ever-changing global society, excuse me, we have to think about, what does that look like for our graduates who are walking across the stage? Can we say that each one of them truly has met this objective for our school system? And how would we know? What does that look like on that student's path at the end of their elementary experience? At the end of their middle school experience? And then at the end of the high school experience? And that should be clearly defined in a way that we actually can measure it. And I say, we're perfectly designed to get the results that we're currently getting. So, if we're happy as a school system, we shouldn't change anything. If we think we're happy with the results we're getting, and there are several areas I think we should be happy with, but if we want different results, we have to think about how we're changing our system and our structures. And I think there's a few areas that we can continue to assess and make modifications to that will allow us to meet our mandate for our kids. That's a short overview of our thinking with respect to Goal One. Any questions on this one?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
How many, how many program areas, when you think about the instructional council?
Yeah.
What's the scope of it in program areas that you're looking at?
If you're really digging into every program area in a district, there's likely 13.
Okay. That's a great answer. I have no idea. Like, off the top of your head, like, I'm assuming math, science?
Math, science, ELA, music, art.
Okay.
Sometimes even within the sciences, you get into different specific program areas within science. Athletics is a program area that we should continue to, so those are a few, just to get started. Guidance is an area, social-emotional learning, which kind of encompasses a few others.
Yeah, okay, alright. In terms of measurement, I totally am very interested in how the school system that people are in for 13 years helps them sort of, as they move through each school, but then post? How does that come into, like, two-year, one year out? Are you prepared to do whatever the hell you're doing now?
Right.
And how did, how do you do it? Two years out, four, I don't know, five years? When's your, when's diminishing returns of your high school kick in? But how does that work, and how will that work, or how are you thinking about that working in here?
Yeah, so, an option we have to consider, and Julie, I know we talked about this, I think, many months ago, so, I believe it was you, about post-graduation surveys. So, periodically assessing, or checking in with our students after graduation, and asking them to reflect back on their high school, from where they are now, and how their high school experience prepared or did not prepare them for where they currently are in their life. And those, there are products that could be, that we could decide are, would be helpful to us to resolve that question.
Right now, we have department chairs, right? And that's just at the high school, is that correct? And do they just look at the high school? Because I'm assuming looking at the curriculum for their department is part of their job, but are they really just looking at the high school's curriculum, or are they looking K-12?
They're primarily looking at their respective high school or secondary area. However, we also have liaisons, I'm sorry, we also have liaisons for K-5 areas as well. So, often the chairs and the liaisons will work together to examine and try to establish what is that thread that ties them in the K-12 experience. I think, though, by formalizing a structure for routinely meeting and examining that, we're in a better position to truly build upon each child's experience year over year.
Okay, so we have some loose constructs of what you're looking for, but it's not quite working
Right.
As well as it could.
Yes, I think that this is an area where a few additional minor actions, you know, getting these folks in a room together isn't a big deal.
Tighten things up a little.
Will go a long way
Yeah.
To bring us further, to establishing greater coherence in our instructional program.
Okay.
I'll have some further thoughts to share, a little teaser, when it comes to our second board meeting in February, because that's when I'll be presenting on the curriculum and instruction component of the budget. So, I'll have some further thoughts in terms of planning for next year on things that I think will help in this area.
Okay.
So, facilities and safety, if you ask me, I think I've been here 90 school days, that in the first 90 days, what area did you probably spend the most time on, and do you feel like the most has been done? And it's probably under the umbrella of facilities and safety. With respect to the three goal areas, this is probably the one that me and our administrative team have spent the most time on, both to address matters now, but also to plan for our future. So, again, the goal statement, we want to finalize the planning for a proposed bond referendum, and facilitate a process which elicits trust and support for proposed modifications and improvements to the school district facility. An evaluation of the safety and security protocols currently in place in the school system will be included as part of the process, and as necessary and/or appropriate, a plan for improving the safety and security of the school district will be implemented. So, our current reality, and again, this, these were defined back in the fall, but there are several facets of the school district facility that are in need of repair, remediation, or updating. The district and the Board of Ed have discussed facilities issues over the past year with gradual movements towards improvements. However, some elements of the safety infrastructure are also in need of improvement, and a commitment was made to the community to upgrade elements of the infrastructure, but the district remained in somewhat of a holding pattern with the change in leadership, with me coming on board. Again, this is, this is what we were working with back in October or November, after the goals were derived. So, our ideal future state, we want a campus that's reflective of the community's value for its school, and a system that anticipates facility needs, so they can be adequately addressed in a timely manner. You may have heard, we've talked about the cafeteria a few times over, and I don't mean to dwell on it, but my own child looks forward, probably most forward, to Fridays, because it's pizza day in the cafeteria, my younger son, Luke. And I can, I could feel the pain of our elementary kids last Friday, when we couldn't serve pizza, because our oven broke again. And I actually had Tony take some pictures of it, because the guy was working on it yesterday, he was here. But there are areas that we know we can do better, that are just in disrepair, we need to replace the board, you have talked about this with Anne. And I feel strongly, and I feel good, that we're in a position to actually put this before the community to address those areas. So, we're going to review the safety audit, the second safety audit, and that will identify items likely to yield the greatest returns on investment, under the umbrella of safety. We already have prioritized a working list of building needs to include in a referendum that works complete, and we, I believe, have begun to work to gain support for short and long-term facility improvements with the Buildings and Grounds Committee. I don't speak for the committee, but I feel, just having participated, that the committee does feel very strongly that the first wave of improvements that are gonna be before the community for vote in, in May, that they're very supportive of that work. We realize this is an area where there's some near-term stuff that we can do, but there's going to be, there's a longer-term discussion that needs to be had. If I were to go back to the ideal future state of a community that is reflective of, or a facility that's reflective of the community's values for its school, I think there's a conversation we have to have with our broader community about what that includes. And that's not going to be in this referendum that, in the, in May, but that's something we should get started on promptly thereafter, that discussion with our community. Yeah. Any questions about our work under safety and facilities?
So, I think I wanna restate, oh, I wanna restate how I think, what I think you said at the end.
Sure.
Maybe a little more bluntly, I don't know. But, I mean, I feel like you're right, that for years, really, the board and the Buildings and Grounds Committee have acknowledged the health and safety needs. You've done, like, a really amazing job with Anne to pull together the presentation that we had last week, to talk about the referendum that is designed to address the most immediate, really pressing needs. But what I heard you say is that that is a first step.
Right.
That there is a bigger conversation, and that's, and it's definitely where we need to focus, and I know, I think I speak for all of us on the board, about really wanting to be part of the effort to make sure there's really lots of opportunities for communication with the public, and to be supportive in that way. But that, but that, that's a first step.
Yes.
And then there are other things.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's gonna be, we don't wanna go there, we've got this first thing to focus on, but that's gonna be an interesting and a really important community conversation, like, really different than I think I've seen the community do, engage in, in a while. Because I think it's, I think it's really, it is really important.
Yeah, you only get one shot sometimes at having conversations like those.
Yeah.
Because ultimately, it comes down to the public's vote, if you're asking them to support something. So, how you engage the community in the conversation, in and of itself, becomes a critical component.
Right.
In addition to their voting down the road.
Right.
So, if you don't effectively engage the community from the start, you don't get anywhere after that.
Right.
So, you can't ask them to endorse it. But I, in my conversations upon entry, it was clear to me that there was some short-term work that needed to be done, and I felt with Anne that we were in a position to address the short-term work. That was non-negotiable stuff. Nobody was arguing that we needed to update the cafeteria space. It speaks for itself. But that there were some items that I think become a matter of discussion, and the community really has to have a conversation with our, with the board, with our school leadership, with our educators who work here, about whether or not we're going to incorporate other items into this campus, and whether or not we even can. That has to be part of it as well.
Right.
We have a lot of space, but, but we do have space. And I think these are items that have been discussed in the past, but perhaps we should come back to now, because they deserve their own space.
Right. But I guess, I mean, and I, you know, I thought at the last, we had all these questions about the presentation, and I felt like it was really constructive, but I felt like we did give you all a lot of feedback, you know?
Yes.
Feedback. But without necessarily articulating as clearly as I want to in this moment, about like, how impressive it was to get to that, to that point, and really a recognition of all the work that went on
Oh, thank you.
Before you came, but also all the work, like, an amazing amount of work, of really taking what was this unwieldy, at times seeming list of things, and to make it really concrete with Anne, I mean, that's
That's good.
That's, that's really, you know, much appreciated.
No, we have a good team. Nabeel and Anne have been wonderful to work with, and
And Nabeel, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay, yeah, cover our bases there. They've been great to work with, and I think these are areas, too, it will really allow their strengths to shine moving forward. So, I'm pleased with where we are on it. I think there's so much to it, it's so intricate, and it's such a, it's a conversation, again, you have to be really deliberate with. I can go into my first meeting with the District Instructional Council and have an ineffective meeting, and it'll be okay, we'll have a better second meeting. You can't enter into facilities conversations and have a bad meeting, or have the process get in the way, because people get discouraged, it's, you know, there's, so we have to be very careful in our planning for that. We spent a lot of time getting to where we were with it, and, you know, I'm happy with where we are. It maybe came at the expense of Goal One and Goal Three for the, in the short term, but by, at the end, we'll, we'll be fine.
But it had to.
Yeah.
I mean, it really had to. And I don't actually think it was at that much of an expense, based on my, where I sit.
Okay.
But it did have to take precedence.
Great. Appreciate your
How would you see that next conversation align, or not aligned with the, what I'm assuming is gonna be a refresher of the strategic plan?
Yeah, it should be a component of it. Now, we'll, we'll talk more about strategic planning before the end of the year, because we're gonna have to plan for it, and there may be a cost. So, there'll be some, it'll be a good conversation for us to come back to. I would be surprised if through a strategic planning process next year, something related to facilities didn't come out of that. The conversation with the community will be an offshoot of that, so I don't wanna just, so we're on the same page. I don't think we're gonna, as a, in a strategic planning process, get into, you know, the what specifically. I think we're going to identify that there's a long-term conversation, or plan that needs to go into our facilities, and then from there, there may be a particular group, a steering committee of some sort, maybe it's the Buildings and Grounds Committee identified to develop a process for engaging the community in
Create infrastructure to address the problem.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah. Any other questions about Goal Two? Okay. Systems for communication, we're always communicating. Let me read the goal first. So, we want to develop and articulate clear systems for communication between the Board of Ed, administration, school employees, students, parents, and community members that are proactive and predicated on trusting positive relationships. Our current reality, again, this was going back to the fall, there was feeling that there was little support or structure for proactively engaging our community in discussion or dialogue about our schools, or the community's perspective about our school system. As a result, we tend to be reactive to varying needs and perspectives. Again, this is on an administrative level, where we're sitting with this. Our ideal future state, we want a communication system that's both proactive and responsive, which allows for accurate information to come in to the system and to go out from the system. So, again, I think in and of itself, this is a difficult goal to say, we're going to do this specific, or take this specific action and see, you know, a 40% improvement in how people feel about the school's communication. You know, my near-term actions, I'll come back to that. As far, so, in trying to be a student with this, and what other districts are doing, and what's working for other districts, and maybe what's not, I've heard a few interesting things. There are some clear strategies some school districts are taking that they feel good about, but largely, every school superintendent who I've spoken with identifies that, yeah, this is something I haven't quite figured out, I'm still working on, you know, we've tried a few things over the years, and, you know, we've gotten some good results here, but I still don't feel it's quite at the place where I need it to be. You know, in the era of social media, of course, adds a layer of complexity to this, because the, it kind of feels like this constant need to respond to various things that are out there in the public discourse, and somewhat, it being somewhat of an uphill battle. Many of my colleagues would identify such. But there are strategies that several of them are taking to proactively engage the community that I think would be helpful. Many would point to their budget development process as the critical one to focus on, if you're going to start somewhere. Everything from how information is presented to the board, but also to including various opportunities throughout that process for the community to come and learn more about the budget. From just a very cursory overview, to some of my colleagues sitting down, line by line, with the budget on a Saturday, and giving community members an opportunity to go through it, because that's what the community, there's a segment of their community they really feel that's necessary. So, if there were an area to target, several of my colleagues would point to the budget development process as being one, where you're putting new structures or systems in place for communicating the budget to the community at large. And I think you've seen some shifts we've tried to make this year, and will continue to make in future years. I've alluded to the Key Communicator Program before. I also had in my planning the Let's Talk System, but I came to understand that we've actually utilized Let's Talk here somewhat unsuccessfully in the past, so I've scrapped that. But that's good, that's action we've taken, I've assessed that and determined it's probably not the best thing to try to reinstall here. But the Key Communicator Program is one of those proactive mechanisms for engaging a subgroup of community members who are very well-connected to the community at large. So, whether it be just by who they are, and the, the time they've been in our community, maybe they've been residents for decades, to a particular position they hold, maybe they are a prominent business owner that many of the community comes into and out of throughout the week. Seeking a cross-section of those individuals to meet routinely with me, our administrative team, perhaps members of our Board of Education, to talk through the district's priorities, to hear from them periodically what their concerns are, what they're hearing in the community that may be concerns that we're not hearing. And to use that information as a mechanism of more effectively getting in for, communicating to the district, or communicating to the community at large, and getting in for good information in, to be able to put good information out, as the community is interested in learning about our school. So, that's an area to be developed between now and the end of the school year. I'm working with BOSI's on that, so we've begun that work just from a planning perspective, but we haven't implemented anything yet. We should be in the next six weeks or so. That one got a little delayed with some other items, but I'll feel good about having some things to talk about, and to show to the board between now and the end of the year.
I also think that it's not always about coming up with like, the most new, creative way to communicate.
Right.
Because what I've observed is, just in your short time here, using, you know, good old-fashioned email
Yeah.
Effectively is great.
Yeah.
And so, when you send out an email, you know, that's about the traffic pattern
Sure.
Or the, I don't know, school closing, or whatever you're sending out an email about, if you're making the choice to be thoughtful in that communication
Right.
And clear, and direct, people really respond to it.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't think it's always about, like, finding a new way to communicate.
No.
But more just using the mechanisms that we have. You send letters, you send text messages
Right.
You send emails. And what I've observed is that you've been doing that so effectively, that people feel communicated with.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So, I'm, you know, it's not to say you can't do new things too, it's like, we, you know, let's spread the
Sure.
Spread our wings and attack it from every angle, but I think it's also about just using words in a way that people can hear what you're saying.
You're absolutely right. So, any of us who are in a leadership position, so this goes for me, our building administrators, Anne, Nabeel, and Chris, as Athletic Director, we have a responsibility to make sure we're communicating really effectively, and using whatever mechanism in a, in a productive way to convey whatever message we're seeking to put out there. That's, that's non-negotiable. If you're in a leadership role, you have to be able to do that well. So, that's good feedback on the communication that's going out, is well-received. We want to make sure, too, though, we're staying attuned and getting good information in, because we don't always know, we don't know what we don't know.
Sure.
And I think that there is a, you know, there's a dialogue that goes on outside of the school. I certainly, as my kid's school, I'm talking about our schools with my neighbors and with our friends, and I feel a responsibility as your superintendent, and I know our building principals do as well, to be attuned to, well, how do people talk about our school? What, when they come to experience it, what do they think works well, and what doesn't work well? And usually, when you tap into that, folks have some pretty keen insights into what can make our schools better. And that's what I think something like Key Communicator will help with. But I appreciate your, your perspective, it's good for me to hear about the information that's going out.
Even high school students were so impressed that they were notified in advance, and did not have to anticipate a delayed closing. So, so appreciative.
Were they really excited?
Well, I'll tell you, my, Stefano says to me, so since when do we get text messages that let us know we're gonna open?
Don't go bad, kids. And, because it's, timing's appropriate, Ms. Dino, the nickname now
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Anne came up with a new nickname for me. It was No Flake Phil.
It was No Flake Phil, but it didn't really
It didn't.
I think that this really sounds, sounds good. Full Day Phil.
Full Day Phil. That's what Anne came in with this morning, I thought it was pretty funny. I said, if there's an opportunity tonight, let's get that in. Alright. So, that's with respect to communication, and one thing, an incoming board member had said to me very early on, was that personal style of communication is important, and that's something that, you know, we should honor, and I think you're speaking of that. But also just being attuned to the systems that But also just being attuned to the systems that we have in place for communicating with, with families and with the community at large is equally important. So, I'm trying to honor both of those, because I think it's a, I think it's a keen insight. I just want to speak to a few other areas of success, I feel, thus far this school year, and then a few additional areas of need that we're working on, because it's not just about these goals. These goals are major target areas, but there's work that's going on outside of these, and I don't want any community, community member to think, "Well, if it's not in those three goal statements that we're not focused on things." And this is by no means exhaustive, but I think it emphasizes several other areas that we're doing good work in. First, I, I think I've had a very smooth transition of leadership here. Transitions are important. Dr. Bowers was helpful to me, the entire administrative team was very helpful to me in coming on board, as well as the Board of Education. I've been here for six months approximately, I feel like I've been here for six years, and that's a good thing, you know, because you feel like you're steeped in the fabric of what's going on in the school community. You know, right away, resolving those issues with the solar panels on the main building, it was a lot of work, but I'm glad we got it done before the start of the school year, because that had the potential to be a continued distraction for the Board and for the administration, and I felt like we were able to move on from it. I felt we had a very successful search for Director of Facilities and Transportation. Nabeel's off to a great start with us, and I think is going to do some really outstanding work here. It's going to be instrumental with the bond referendum work that we've both presented or preparing to present to the community, and then whatever work comes thereafter. And it's important to have a really good person on the point for that, and I think Nabeel's that, very person along with Anne, obviously. We're in the middle of a process for updating the district's policy manual. It sounds like a couple of weeks we'll have our first draft, and Jen, Peggy, and I will begin to review the new policy manual. That's important work, arguably some of the most important work the Board will be doing, and I think we'll be in a good position to start that once Erie One gives us her draft back. I also think we've effectively engaged P&amp;W BOSEs. I, I think this is often underlooked, or undervalued, or unknown potentially. The Pud of Northern Westchester BOSEs is one of the most effective progressive school systems in the state, if not in the Northeast. They have great people there who have a lot to offer our school, and I think we've really reestablished some positive relationships with their organization that are going to help us in these programmatic areas that we're examining moving forward, because they have some of the more progressive, well-researched educators in the field available to us, and I think we should be accessing them, and I certainly plan to in the, in the years to come. As far as areas to be addressed, again, by no means exhaustive, but stuff that I know is like front and center for us, we have to secure an outstanding leader for the PPS Department. We've obviously been actively engaged in trying to find that individual. I, we've reposted the position again just last week, already have a few applicants who on paper I think will be good candidates for the position, but it's important that we have an outstanding leader in that department for, for years to come. It's a department that's been through a lot of transitions over the last several years. And, you know, it's hard, you know, when our leadership team isn't complete, to, to do our best work. And I think who we get involved is gonna not only help under the broad, broad running of the district, but will, really will have a positive impact on our student experience here, especially our, our exceptional learners. We obviously need to facilitate, I should say, an effective budget development process, sorry, that's my typo, with the Board of Education. I think we're in the process of doing that, and that'll carry us forward for the next few months. As John and I were talking, we have to reevaluate the status of our strategic plan, it'll likely be connected to the budget development process, and develop a recommendation for our plan and vision that'll guide us through the next five years. The prior strategic plan's coming to an end, so we have to now be, kind of reengage our community in thinking about, well, now for the next five years, or ten years potentially, what are our areas of focus? I think there, an area of continued focus is going to be what our teacher and administrator professional learning processes. And we have good people, but their training is essential now, and we really have to make sure we're keeping that front and center, not only as we're budgeting, but as we're spending our time throughout the, the school year. We have times throughout the year for our teachers and our administrators to come together to continue to advance their learning and their leadership, and we want to continue to make that a priority. And further development of our social-emotional learning continuum, this is connected to the P&amp;W BOSEs work there. Again, there's some exceptional work going on in the region under the umbrella of social-emotional learning. I think we have some pockets of that in our district, but we really need to tie it together. I see this as an area where we can be, like, this is something we could be best in the, the world at, we could be a model for, between the value for our children's social-emotional learning experience in our community. You don't hear that unfortunately as a value everywhere, and people say it, but I don't know if, if they're really as attuned to its importance as we may be here. And I think we have some expertise in-house as well that are ready to take that and run with it, if given the space to and connected with the appropriate resources. So, that's an area in terms of program that I think if we were to prioritize, we'd see some exceptional growth in, in the short term. Again, this is by no means exhaustive, but just a few areas that are front and center, I think, for us between now and the end of the year and at the first part of next school year. Any other questions? Thanks, Anne, I'll give you your seat back.
Dr. Benanti, if you don't mind at this point, because we have some members of the audience, I just want to give anybody an opportunity if they have any questions or comments about this. So, if you do, feel free. To the, yeah, the presentation right now. Okay. All righty, with that said, we'll move on to the information reports, so Dr., actually, Mr. Wallach.
As David's approaching, Andrew sends his regards. He was, I think he has play practice tonight, an important one. I saw him getting lunch today, we were chatting about that, so he couldn't be with us, but...
Thank you.
He'll be watching, I'm sure.
Good evening, everybody, nice to see you. If you read my Board Report that I submitted, that should be part of your packet, the first item on there mentions the passing of Lori Isler, and I know a moment of silence was given for her at the last Board meeting, but I think I would be remiss if I didn't share how it impacted us at our building level. In my thirty years in education, I, I've never seen anything where a building has come together that much to support each other. It's obviously a, a very big tragedy for our community, losing Lori who was here for decades and was even in our district as a student for half of her public school career. That said, everybody came out to support us, all, not only all three buildings, but support that Dr. Benanti arranged from, from P&amp;W BOSEs, obviously support from our Board as well. It's a grieving process that our building is going through. As I say, it gets a little better every day, and we're really, you know, I think I'm proud of everybody that we're able to come together the way that we did and support each other. I mean, it's, it's less than three weeks ago at this point that, you know, this, this all, we all came back from New Year's vacation and, and, and had to deal with this awful, awful, awful situation. But I certainly want to thank everybody for the support, and I know that we are getting better, but it's, it's just, for many people, it's just not the same, and it will take some time. We have a great, great, great supportive faculty and staff, and they're making it better for everybody, they're making it better for our students, and I just, I, I had to share that tonight, it's certainly not something happy to talk about, but I just felt, you know, to, to honor Lori's memory and, and all the things that, that happened after her passing, I think I needed to share that with you, so I just wanted to share that. To move into one current educational note, the last item on my, my report is about the sustainability project that's going on in fifth grade. Mr. Duder is leading that as part of his, his Science Social Studies class, and all three fifth-grade classes are looking into reducing waste in our school, specifically reducing food waste, measuring how much snacks are left over, measuring how much lunches are left over. They're also looking at utilities. I had classes today that, you know, it was a sunny day, turned the lights off and timed how long that they were being able to continue functioning as a class without the lights on, and reporting that back to Mr. Duder's students who are tracking it. I know the students asked for an appointment with Nabeel, they came down and they asked Jody in, in my office, you know, how, how do they get in contact with, with Mr. Botros? So, it was, you know, learning experience all around, and it's something that sustainability is important, I think, to us as a community, but it's something that's, will carry over with these children as, as they get older and as they move into life. And, you know, we only have one planet and we all share it, and we have to keep it good for everybody, so I, I think that's important. So, I just wanted to share with you that. Mr. Duder, I know, has posted some pictures on Twitter, if any of you follow him, just within the past day or so. So, a lot of good stuff going on in fifth grade, a lot of good stuff going on in all places, but I just wanted to share that, that one item as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Silke?
Good evening. I'll just say that, that it's a huge project going on in the fifth grade, and we even had a couple of students come to last wellness meeting and ask about cafeteria foods and so on and so forth, so they're, they're really exhaustive in their, in their research for this project, and it'll, it's going to be interesting to see what they come up with. Just a little word about the progress of the social-emotional learning updates going on at the middle school, that'll likely be part of the detailed report that the middle school has, but just a sneak peek or a snidbit. The middle school Student Leadership Group, which is comprised of the team leader teachers and two students from each grade level, has been meeting twice every other week, and, you know, part of the work that they've been doing is coming up with a school slogan or motto that would be an acronym, that would include the universal characteristics and expectations that we have for one another when we're at school. So, they had come up with True Blue, and then they did a survey of their student body in the cafeteria to find out what their fellow students would want the acronym TRUE to stand for. So, they came up with teamwork, responsibility, understanding, and excellence. And their next piece of work is going to be penning the expectations that are housed under each of those characteristics. This group is also wonderfully doing an appreciation week each month, and this month was custodian appreciation week. So, they're really doing great work, the work that I hope will become, you know, the basis of, you know, the Universal SEL Program at the middle school, if not, you know, part of the district work as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sniffen?
Just two quick things. One, I'd like to highlight the work of the Social Studies Department. There's been a lot of shifts and changes at the state level as it relates to global and as it relates to US. And again, today, with it being a regents' day, we had some time to sit down as a group. The Social Studies Department, under Jackie McGrath's leadership, really started to take a look at some of those shifts and changes and our instructional practices, so I'd like to mention that. In addition, I'd just like to highlight the National Honor Society Induction Night, I think went incredibly well. We had it here at Haldane. I know there was a little bit of worry over doing it here, and I think the overall consensus from my parent group that I had last week was that it was spectacular, it was beautiful, they actually saw their children being inducted, which, when it was at Taconic, it was lovely, but very hard to see. So, I think we've started a new tradition here at Haldane, that the National Honor Society inductions will be here. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Solom?
Good evening, everyone. So, Dr. Benanti was talking a little bit about programs before, and one of the things he mentioned was the Athletic Department. And this spring, we're starting a new program. We're gonna have girls modify lacrosse for the first time in Haldane history. So, it's, it's really just, you know, we had a lot of feedback from community members, from our students. It's a growing sport in this community, as well as many others, so we're excited to start the program. We have pretty much everything set, we're still looking for a coach, so if anyone is available or interested, please reach out, but we're really excited for the girls to have another opportunity to pursue different athletic experiences. So, I think it's gonna be a great thing, and hopefully eventually we'll build up to a varsity program within the next maybe two to four years, depending on, you know, participation and kind of which way the program goes, but that's the, the goal in the long term, so, thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Boshers?
Good evening, everyone, nice to see you. If you read my meeting Board Update Report, we have some progress in terms of appointments. We have bus drivers we're hiring, we have a supervisor, a key supervisor we've hired, and gladly it's someone from within who's really well-qualified and has interests of the district really at heart, so I'm really pleased about that. So, we've got a diversified staff that drives buses, and they're maintaining and cleaning. That poses challenges, but we're gonna supplement that with building up skillsets in the areas where we really need it. But overall, I think we're in a good place, and thank you for your support in staffing the department, and we know we have work to do, and, and I think we got the right people. So, having said that, I just want to thank you again.
Thank you.
If I may, I just want to thank Nabeel and, and the facilities crew, who were very hard at work over the last couple of days to put us in a position to receive students today. And, you know, we, on time, yes, on time. But, Nabeel and his team were great in getting the, it was not an easy storm to, to manage, you know, a lot of ice and whatnot, but the areas around our campus today were really safe for kids. Not having the high school kids here was helpful, but really went a, a long way to getting the facility ready.
Thank you very much, Dr. Benanti. I, I came into this meeting planning to start with that, and then completely forgot it.
It's okay.
We kind of want to forget the storm, it was really hard, because it was very heavy, dense stuff, so really, they did a great job. I couldn't be more pleased, so thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you. Okay, any communication from the public at this time? Sure.
That's better for me. Hi. I, I have notes just because I didn't want to, I wanted to make sure I said everything I needed to say. Hello? First of all, thanks for all you do for our school community, and I, I don't make it to many Board meetings, but I watch all of them, so just wanted you to know.
Sorry, Danielle, I don't want to cut you off. Can you just introduce yourselves to the community members at home?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
My name's Danielle Pack McCarthy, I'm a parent of three boys currently attending Haldane Middle and Elementary Schools. I'm also a licensed master social worker, and since my oldest son now in seventh grade was in kindergarten, I've involved myself in the work of Haldane's efforts around social-emotional learning, mental health, and wellness. I've collaborated with teachers, building principals, and other areas, including the Wellness Committee, Discovery Night, the Development and Review of the Character Ed Plan, Haldane Friends and Family University, Character Semlies in ESIT. Four years ago, I established and still coordinate the Seventh Grade Community Service Day and work with teachers to create cross-cultural exchanges between Haldane students and students in the Eastern Caribbean. I've loved being involved in these efforts, and I'm always inspired and impressed by the deep devotion that teachers, administrators bring to these projects. I realize, though, that the work of social-emotional learning, although supported in so many different ways at Haldane, can never be fully sustainable and incorporated into our school culture without very real support from the Board of Education, and that's what brings me here tonight, because I feel like sometimes these things happen in the buildings, and, and that many of them don't trickle down to the Board level, so I'm happy to be here. In October, I wrote a letter to this Board offering my support in this area, urging the Board to address these issues during this school year. Since then, you decided to put the item on your June workshop agenda, which effectively leaves these issues off the table for budget discussions this year. And so, I'm here to urge the Board to move this workshop up in the school calendar year to discuss the area of social-emotional learning in order to create the opportunity for specific funds to be put into place to financially support this area for our students. And tonight, I was really encouraged to hear Dr. Benanti speak about the plans ahead for a more comprehensive approach to these different areas, especially the area of curriculum evaluation, which I'm, I'm glad to hear, social-emotional learning guidance, social work, and all those things hopefully fall under in order to evaluate what we have in place, and different practices that have been tried through the years and kind of within silos, I think sometimes this work happens, and looking at it from more of a comprehensive approach, I was really encouraged by that. Since March of last year, I've served as the Town of Phillips Town's Addiction Resource Coordinator. This position grew out of our community's work around the tragic loss of local youth due to overdose deaths. Several of these young people were Haldane graduates. In 2014, following these heartbreaking deaths, meetings were held with many community groups and leaders within Phillips Town with the goal of addressing substance use and misuse in our town. This working group culminated in the formal creation of the Phillips Town Communities That Care Coalition in June 2016, with a focus on awareness, education, information, and referral. Our community demanded still more be done to address these issues and to link families to needed resources. to needed resources. The Town Board of Phillips Town, responding to community need for financial resources towards these important efforts, included funds in its 2018 budget for the creation of a part-time addiction resource coordinator, which is my position within the town. It began as an eight-hour-a-week position during the first week of March 2018 and had since been increased to 12 hours per week. Through my position with the town, I continue to partner with Haldane administration and support staff to help support students and families as needed with community resources, as well as working with adult residents of our area. I am working with community leaders and Phillips Town Communities That Care Coalition to bring more local resources to our families. I believe strongly in families, communities, and schools coming together to fully support our young people. I don't know if any of you have seen the movie Beautiful Boy. It's based on the book Beautiful Boy, and David Chef, the author of that book and the real-life dad, has stated, "If we want to stop our kids from using, we must understand that drugs are a symptom, not the cause. Effective prevention necessitates a full court press that focuses on building strong individuals and families. It requires the participation of parents, teachers, schools, and communities." And I think so many people in this room know that I'm a huge Haldane fan, and I have put my, so much of my energy and time to the kids in this school and work so well with this administration. But the reality that I'm seeing on the ground is that young people still are slipping through the cracks. And that is, I understand that this is a problem that I work with the community closely, with families, and with the school. But I've heard from several young people and families that they don't feel connected to their school or their community. And so I just want to, I want to really urge the board towards that in their planning process, that we put this at the forefront and try to really lay this foundation for our young people. I believe strongly that less social emotional support for our students early on, and this is where they are for many of their hours, most of their hours of their day, only means a feeling of disconnection, alienation, and looking towards numbing out when things get too hard. Back in the fall of 2014, I ran a series of middle school student focus groups with Rebecca Pierceall from St. Basil's here at Haldane. We were looking into the Haldane Middle School Student Climate Survey, and one of the, a couple of the responses that, at the time, it was Principal Brent Harrington concerned him was that some of the data showed that a student, even though they felt that they could trust their teachers, they couldn't go to them with a problem. And so this is an area that I think that we can look more deeply in as the board develops both their strategic plan and also looking towards the budget season. At Haldane, with our small student population, and what I see in the community on a larger level is that many of us assume that our kids are making important connections on a daily basis. What I've found is that these assumptions can be dangerous and leave kids without anyone they trust to talk to. There are many efforts that have been tried at Haldane and many more ways that other school districts are doing this and we can learn from. Johann Hari, writer and journalist on the subject of addiction and author of Chasing the Scream, says in a TED Talk, "The opposite of addiction is not sobriety, the opposite of addiction is connection." In multiple research studies, the single predictor of healthy emotional interactions was lots of face-to-face communication. It's how kids learn empathy. At another board meeting, Trustee Genzielli talked about a workshop at a Board of Ed Conference that she attended that talked about social emotional learning, and she stated how helpful it was for her because it highlighted the why behind why Haldane is doing, why, what they're doing in areas of authentic learning and project-based learning. And the why is because we want our kids feeling connected to their schools, families, and communities, because laying a foundation of social emotional health allows our kids to learn reading, writing, and math. The why is because the combination of emotional academic achievements lead our students to success after they leave the halls of Haldane and the small village of Cold Spring. Dr. Benante talked earlier about what our students are gaining at the end of the day with their diploma at graduation, and without this foundation really built into, and really being a foundation, their other academic achievements aren't going to be, they're not going to be as successful. Currently at Haldane Elementary School, Renee Curry serves as the one school social worker with approximately 360 students. The middle school, and I might be off on these numbers, so you guys would know better than me. The middle school with 180 students does not have a social worker on staff, but rather a guidance counselor and part-time school psychologist. The high school, the population of around 295 students, has one social worker and psychologist and a guidance counselor. These support staff positions fall under Haldane's People Personnel Services, which currently we have two part-time intern professionals, but we've been unsuccessful over the past five years in retaining someone in this position. Because of this, I feel strongly that the longer-term planning and building sustainable social emotional programming has not been a priority. As stated in the Haldane 2018-2019 budget, there are two guidance counselors and 1.5 psychologists in the district. A large portion of a school psychologist's time is devoted to serving the need of special education students. New York State Education, along with the National Association of Social Workers, recommends one school social worker per 250 students. In this way, our students are being underserved, even for being a small school. In addition, our three school buildings employ a number of different social emotional learning curriculums without the umbrella of an overall district curriculum informing school culture. And I just stated here that I know in January of last year, the New York State Education Department sent out a memo really promoting its draft of Every Student Succeeds Act State Plan that encourages schools and districts to adopt a whole-school, whole-community, whole-child model, showing that, research showing that the whole-child approach with an emphasis on social emotional learning will lead to improved outcomes for children. So I just, kind of in summary, how do we set up a culture and structure that's recognized and important? We need the support of the board, and we need the support of the board in the form of pulling the area of social emotional learning to the forefront. I just feel like it needs to be addressed before June while we're still talking about, while we're still trying to talk about the budget and get it up for a vote. We need to ask ourselves as a district if we're ready to fully realize our commitment to educate the whole child, knowing that this will encourage overall success of each student. Number two, if social emotional learning is a priority, we need to state this clearly in a way of a comprehensive plan, be clear with our mission and support it financially this coming school year. Number three, if social emotional learning programs continue to take place in silos, they'll never be fully incorporated into school culture. If they're integrated throughout the curriculum, students will feel a deep connection to their school community and a deeper sense of themselves as successful in the world. And lastly, these changes need to take place from the top down, involving researching, implementing, and evaluating evidence-based approaches in these areas. So, thank you for allowing me to speak. I know I was kind of wordy, but I'm happy to answer any questions, and I just really want to thank you for all that you are doing already, and just I am always willing to help be part of this process, and so, so thank you for that.
Thank you. I think we all have something, so. I just wanted to mention that I was thinking about your numbers, and last year, we asked Dr. Shoa to give us a breakdown, and if he felt we have the appropriate staffing, right, to cover all our social emotional needs. And the answer was, yes, we do. We're covered. So, Dr. Shoa unfortunately is no longer here, and as you said, we're working with two interim. So I'd be curious to reevaluate that spreadsheet at some point. And see what others feel.
Right. And I think, like, an important piece of, it's even stated in the Haldane budget that because a lot of the time of a school psychologist really goes towards testing and working with students with IEPs that, which, you know, is super important in its own, in its own importance and its own priority, but sometimes just the general well-being of the students who, you know, may, may not have an IEP but need someone to talk to and are showing maybe some signs of, you know, being isolated from peers or being depressed, I feel like those kind of issues often get, often get overlooked. And sometimes that's what, that's what I'm hearing kind of on the other end, whether it's older students or graduates from the community. So it will be, I would be very interested as well.
Yeah. I'm just trying to say that this wasn't something that the board hadn't previously asked for data on, honestly. And I think we thought we were good with the numbers that they provided.
What I hear you asking for, I think, is, or recommending, is a K through 12 mental health curriculum that has a continuum, that has accountability, has the appropriate staff, has somebody leading it, a director of PPS. And that's very, like, as I put it in, like, school board talk, you know, we were just hearing Dr. Benante speak about how one of his goals, or one of the district's goals, is this K through 12 alignment that we recognize doesn't really exist in as strong a way as we would like it to. But I feel like what I hear you saying is that's something that you see as something that we could do better, something that really goes from K through 12 with social emotional learning that has progression and curriculum-based work, that isn't just happening in a workshop here or a speaker there, but that there's a through line. And that there's a, there's a commitment curricularly from the district.
And it's so layered, right? Because there's, there's like these state guidelines for guidance, or state guidelines for mental health now being recommended to be taught in health classes, and like all these things. And, you know, Ms. Silke and I are embarking on this journey to try to do sort of an assessment of where does mental health live in our district, right? And through the Wellness Committee. And it's just, it is, it feels scattered. It feels scattered, and, and I know, and I appreciate the board, you know, looking at taking these issues on, but I've really, since literally my son started kindergarten, I've been really pushing and working kind of behind the scenes and with administration towards these issues. And I guess what I've never, I'm like, gosh, I've never really brought it to the board in terms of, like, this should be, I feel like we're in a unique position in our, in our district that we can really have this K-12 school culture, that this is, it's like this really positive school climate that you can actually make sense of it all, right? It's not like it's, it's this, so I guess that's, I think you put it, you know, you put it well.
And the other thing, I guess I would love to hear your thoughts on, is that, you know, you purposely wanted to bring this to a string budget cycle so that we would think about putting resources behind the priority, right? That's the goal. It's your goal. So if you had your perfect, you know, wish list for Haldane, what do you feel like the school's missing in terms of staff?
Yeah. I think, you know, it's hard, I think without the PPS director, I feel like really we're at a loss there for not having someone, someone there. And I do, I have shared this with Dr. Benante before, that I feel like that position is so huge and kind of wears two very different hats. So I feel like that's, we may have, that may have why we've been unsuccessful over the past years, keeping, you know, someone who's equally good in both those areas of a social, you know, really, social work, counseling, those areas, and then as well as special services and for children with IEPs and that whole kind of, which I know, I know less about, so I'm not, I'm not going to pretend I know as much about that. But what I do, I feel like, I don't know, I feel like even looking at the position would be helpful, and like, are we asking too much of one position? And then also, I think because those middle school years are really such a transitional time, I would love to see a social worker in the middle school that is not, you know, I've asked many of my son's friends, who do you go to when you have a problem? And who would you go to in the school if you had a problem? And some of them are like, I don't know, Ms. Curry? I'm like, you can't. I'm like, she's elementary. And it's, you know, I think that there's confusion around that, and I know Ms. Curry does slide over to some sixth-grade students if she already has a previous relationship with them. She may hold on to some of those relationships, but it's confusing. And, you know, they did just, they have a new guidance counselor now, so hopefully that will be the beginnings of new relationship building there. But this has been, since my son was in third grade, I was working with those middle school students, and they didn't know, they didn't know who they would talk to either, because I think they see the guidance counselor as someone around curriculum, around, they won't call it curriculum, but around their classes and what classes to take. And even though guidance pushes into the classrooms and teaches guidance subjects, it is kind of, it's based more on a student success and what kind of student, what kind of learner are you, very academic, which in the end, in the end, even school social workers are, that's their end goal, right? But it's more on an environmental level of reducing the barriers to learning. So looking at what could be these other barriers, what are the social barriers that is getting in the way of this student fully achieving academic success? So if I really had to, just off the top of my head now, I would love a social worker, you know, a dedicated social worker for those grades specifically. So, and it's the only building without a social worker, so I'm a little biased, because I am a social worker, but I think that those kind of, those areas are underserved in the middle school.
Danielle, I know your letter and your comments were directed towards the board, but I think it would be helpful, it doesn't have to be that draft, but if you wouldn't mind sending it along. And if you send it to me, I'll make sure the board gets it, or Julia. Just, I think, I really do feel we actually want, we want the same thing, and much of what you were saying, I couldn't quite keep track of all of it, but as I was making notes, yes, I agree, I agree. But I think the path may differ. And it's not to critique at all what you've presented, that we just don't have a, unfortunately, we're not in a environment where we can spare no expense. You know, we're capped, and if we weren't, I think we probably could do multiple things, you know, from a list that you were to create and a list that I were to create, and, you know, fair balance in the middle. But I just want to draw some parallels between what you said and some comments I made earlier this evening, because I don't think by having it as the last board presentation later this year means it won't, social emotional learning and its components would not necessarily become a part of the budget construction process for the upcoming school year. I think in our discussions as an administration, there are several elements we would hope to improve upon in our social emotional learning program here at Haldane going into next school year. Some, there may be a cost to, and others, there may be no cost. It's just a matter of making sure we're articulating, you know, again, a continuum of sorts for all of our kids. So one, director of PPS, I think, is a critical part of that. And I agree with you, sometimes I worry about the many hats that director of PPS wears, but I do think they're an essential stakeholder in any work that's going to be done under the umbrella of social emotional learning. And other districts that are really leaning into this, I feel that's a key person or individual that they're leaning on to make this work happen in their building. And I spoke earlier about the importance of that before. The work in creating a K-12, a system for reviewing K-12 programs. So we know it's important, how are we going to go about implementing it? So there's a thread that ties it together between our kindergartners all the way up through our secondary program. There's no necessarily cost to that, we just need to have a space to bring this and put this on the table and say, how are we going to do this, and what does it look like in our schools? Again, I spoke to that earlier. Partnering with PNW BOSIS, I alluded to that before, and it just so happens, you know, here I have the BOSIS flyer I got in the mail today on their social emotional learning priorities and resources for school districts for the upcoming school year. Again, that's because it's not by chance, it's just I was planning to speak to it, and I had this as something that a resource made me to point to. But in accessing more resources in PNW BOSIS, I think that can help. It can take some of the stress off the director of PPS and the many hats, and maybe there's some expertise in the region that we can access. And then engaging individuals such as yourself and other community members, the Communities That Care Coalition, because I agree with you, I do think this is something that's really important to our community, and it should be at the forefront of our agenda for the school year. So I just don't want you to feel as if it's being left, you know, aside because it happens to fall last on our workshop topics. It's just that we have a lot to do, and we have to somewhat pick and choose where these things sit. And, but I don't think that means at all that it won't be emphasized, or there won't be elements of the budget where we could point to continuing to promote various social emotional learning constructs and experiences for our kids, or work in that area, and then articulate that in a way that makes sense for us. One just other note I want to allude to. So I believe David and Mary Ann were speaking to project-based learning experiences that they're, they highlighted various elements of that in their work. David mentioned the fifth graders and the project they're working on in Mr. Duder's class. Mary Ann alluded to that as well. I heard Julie allude to the new social studies framework, very briefly. Each of those things, in and of themselves... Each of those things in and of themselves are huge initiatives in this district. And Julie just quickly mentioned the social studies framework, but we're talking about a complete review of a whole, a whole content area, a whole curriculum, K-12. She was just alluding to the high school work. That impacts every kid in this school district. The project-based learning experience you're familiar with. Mary Ann alluded to some work they're doing with respect to positive behavior interventions and supports, the True Blue piece. We have to be very wary as a school system of how many, how much respective work we're doing in so many different domains. Because I think this has come up for us in the past. I'll point to Ruler as a good example of this. Ruler is an excellent construct for kids, falls under the umbrella of social-emotional learning, for students to essentially better identify the emotion they're bringing into the class and how that influences the way they show up in a particular environment or how others show up in a particular environment and what they do to bring themselves back into a zone where that's better for them in their learning. We were way out ahead of Ruler as a school district before BOSI's even picked it up. But we didn't necessarily articulate, you know, how this work was going to take place on a K-12 continuum. And then we started to pull in other initiatives locally. And then you have changes at a state level that we have to manage. So it kind of creates this environment where we have all these things, kind of all these balls that we're juggling, but not necessarily thriving in any one area. And that's something that I'm wary of. Because I, when I hear Danielle and the passion that she brings to this particular area, and again, I think it's a real value in our community, I empathize. Of course, we want to do something. I think we all do. But also, you know, I look at my administrative team and when we meet, I'm thinking, man, who the heck's going to do this? So I just think going into, it's not to say we can't address that. I just think it speaks to going into the budget season, some of the things you're going to hear from me about additional support that we may need and we're in a position to budget for to allow the social-emotional learning work to thrive, to allow the social studies work to thrive, the PBIS work to thrive, the project-based learning work to thrive. But it's going to take a reexamination of our current structure and system for doing so. Otherwise, these just become a bunch of things that are competing against each other instead of work that we can see we're making really good growth each school year on. So a little long-winded, but I just think you hit on so much that's important. I couldn't help but to comment. But if you could send the letter along, I think that would be helpful. Because there's a lot that you shared that I want to continue to reflect on as well.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle.
And I have a tangential comment. We have to come up with a better setup. I feel like this is like the third board meeting this year where I've sat with my back to people while they're giving really important presentations. And so, excuse me, but it's, we've got to come up with another alternate.
I was listening, I was listening to every word.
I'm Carrie Anne Ferry. I have three children in the district in different, all different grades. My nephew also graduated from here. I've been around here for a long time. I just want to say that I agree with everything that Danielle said. And I come at it from the other side. I'm the special education part. The part that she didn't know much about, I know an incredible amount about. And I think that one of the issues in the district, I've always been told that the greatest programs have a great, well-qualified school psychologist. And I don't mean to point fingers, but I happen to know that our school psychologist did not even meet the minimum requirements for many, many years while she was being paid a tremendous salary. So I think one of the areas we need to start is to reexamine the structure.
Talking personnel, and that can't happen here. So I.
Well, I apologize.
That's okay.
Okay. But probably should be information the public has.
No. If you have concerns about a specific individual, you can bring those forward to any of the administrators in the district. But this is not the appropriate place to talk about any particular individual.
The newspaper was really interested, so I guess I could publish it there.
That's your prerogative, but it shouldn't be discussed here.
Okay. So I guess then the board is doing a good job making sure that everybody's qualified for the positions that they have. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments? Okay. Moving on to Consent Agenda Minutes, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent Agenda Financial, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Margaret, you had.
I had sent a quick note there. So the library books, we have a handful that have been designated as surplus or obsolete. I just sent a quick note to Anne asking if the ones that are not, need to be destroyed because of broken spines or pages coming out or whatever, if we could donate them to the Pleasant Valley Library, which just had a fire and they're looking to restock their circulation. And Anne suggested, yes, that she could take them over if they were willing to take them. Because that is Anne's community that lost their library, which I didn't know that piece when I offered.
Mine as well.
It looks like it was really interesting books.
Yeah, a lot of them did look like very interesting books, but.
Yeah, some of them are not usable, unfortunately, so they were weeded out. But I did contact the librarian today and asked her the ones that are usable. And I did check the website. Thank you. I didn't realize that they were accepting donations of books. There were certain times that they were accepting them. I thought it was just monetary donations at the moment because they are relocating to a temporary facility. But I'll be glad to bring them. And if you said that you had some.
I have some personal ones to bring, too.
I'll be glad to bring them if you want. Save your trip.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent Agenda Personnel, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Dr. Benati, can you just explain to the public what the HFA Sick Lead Bank Committee does, is?
So our teachers' association has in their contract a clause which allows for them, for each of them respectively as members, to donate their sick time to a bank in the case that any other teacher come, is seriously ill and does not have their own sick time. It allows them to access a request and potentially access time from that bank while they're out and still be paid. So it's the group giving, each giving a small part of time that they have outlined in their benefit to potentially give to an individual who may have a need for it in case of serious illness. That has to be reviewed, or those requests have to be reviewed by committee. Part of the committee is representatives from the teachers' union and part representatives of the school district. So this is to appoint Julie and me to serve on that committee because we have a teacher who's requested to access the sick bank.
I see. Thank you.
Any other further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
New business?
This item is the CSE/CPSE Recommendations. The recommended action says, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as presented.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any additional communication? No. Okay, with that said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.